This is the Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, meeting of the Town of Eslang Meadow Planning Board. Those in attendance are myself, Russell Denver, member George Kingston, member John Torsha, member Cassandra Saraswello, and we're joined by the Director of Planning and Community Development for a few more days, and also from the Planning and Community Development Office, Nina Fazio. So I am required by Mass General Law to see if anyone in the audience might be recording this meeting, and if so, would you please raise your Zoom hand and you can be brought into the meeting, identify yourself, and let us know the method that you are recording the meeting by. I don't see anybody, I don't see any hands, so the next item of business would be the acceptance of our, of our previous meeting's minutes. Hopefully, people have had an opportunity to review them. My phone is not on, so I can't tell you the date of that minutes. Can you tell me the day of those minutes, Bethany?
Uh, December 7th.
Okay, so, um, does anyone have any corrections, additions, changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 7th, 2021?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. By roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Okay, first item of business, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, first item of business, a site plan waiver, item number one, case SPRW 2021-60, request for a site plan review waiver for Commonwealth auto appraisals, a home office at 25 John Street, Eslang Meadow, MA, applicant Paul Nickteen, 25 John Street, Eslang Meadow, MA.
I see the petitioner is trying to get into the meeting. Well, wait one second.
I'm unmuted, I'm just trying to get my picture up.
Yep.
Hello?
There you go. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
So tell us a little bit about what you have in mind for the property.
Uh, last year, I went through a program to become a certified Massachusetts damage appraiser. I have now got been licensed. Opportunities for me in this field would include working at a body shop, working for an insurance company, or what I would like to do is an independent appraiser. So I would be out on the road, looking at vehicles, assessing them, and giving an appraisal for either repair or price of vehicle.
Okay, so no one coming to your home?
No.
And you don't have a commercial vehicle?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the site plan waiver?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Congratulations and best of luck on your new, on your new venture.
Fantastic, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure, take care. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, uh, so just, uh, one clerical error, so this is the, what's on the posted agenda that's what to read, not the, um, there's nothing else, just the what's for this next item. This is a longer formed public hearing?
No, this item number two is A and R.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead, my apologies. Um, A and R, uh, number two, case A and R 2021-08, 115 La Salle Street, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to divide the existing parcel known as 115 La Salle Street, assessors parcel ID 24-30-0 into two, two new parcels, parcel A 23,493 in 58 plus or minus square feet, and parcel B 20,129.68 plus or minus square feet, all located in the Residence C zoning district, applicant Michael Carabatta, 202 Allen Street, Eslang Meadow, MA.
Mr. Carabatta, pleasure to see you.
Pleasure to see all of you.
So let us know what you have in mind.
All right, so I'm, I'm assuming you've all taken, had a chance to look at the plan. I'm basically taking roughly an acre parcel and splitting it in half. Um, there is one section in the back that shows it's a fenced in area that crosses the two properties that will be removed. So other than that, it should be straightforward. Um, I can't think of anything, but certainly if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Uh, normally, this is in the purview of Mr. Kingston, who reviews these as closely as anyone I know. Do you have any questions, George?
No, he's got frontage and he's got the setback on the, um, houses that are already, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any questions of the petitioner? So, uh, I just need a motion to endorse the plan.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to endorse by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Carabatta, and please give my best to your father.
Will do, thank you very much, everyone enjoy your holidays.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk. So, um, when we get into this, so, um...
Yeah, just bear with me, this will take, um...
Let's, um, let's have Bethany step in and give you some guidance on exactly what needs to be read into the record.
Um, yeah, so the, the planning board is only acting on the zoning, um, bylaws, which is the bottom half of what you see here on the agenda. Um, so John, if it's easier for you to read, um, that document that I sent you that clarifies exactly what sections apply to the zoning bylaw, you can feel free to do that and just read the highlighted, um, sections, and then we'll go through with the actual changes.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Now, these are the, these are the bolded, um, in black and bolded items along this larger document?
Yep.
Okay, so I will, uh, I'll do that. I just wanted to make sure definitively, all right?
Why don't we just, why don't we first just start off with, this is case, um, at least through the first, um...
First three lines here?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Uh, so new public hearing, case ZN 2021-4, Schedule A, for the purpose of amending the Town of Eslang Meadow zoning bylaws, Schedule A, by adding clarifying language within, within, um, and then I can move on to the, um, the other part here. Now, this is, uh, instead of, uh, crossing out town meeting, adding town council, uh, in section two, in section three, instead of where from, there from, in section four, uh, adding in the item four, or adding in the language for swimming pools, and then period fences surrounding, and then adding C before subsection before, and then adding for additional criteria, and then for, again, another for, section five, adding the word district, then adding the words in the, and then adding district again, section six, uh, adding the language are permitted, section seven, instead of dimension, that word changes to setback, and then adding the words, the foregoing fencing for neighborhood swimming pools shall conform to, section eight, in industrial garden, it'll be park district, the word park being added, and then in section nine, uh, subsection four, five, 450, uh, dash 4.6 permitted uses, in section 10, the words, then the required setbacks, in section 11, square feet, section 12, uh, at the end, special permit application and subdivision review site plan, section 13, in, instead of building zone map, zoning districts map identified in subsection 450, uh, dash 2.1, in, instead of the word following, uses permitted in table 3-1, going on to section 14, instead of a use permitted by section 5.402, uh, that'll read golf course uses, and then instead of a use permitted by section 5.402, golf course uses, uh, section 15, uh, the add, the addition of the word antenna, no changes for section 16 or 17, section 18, the addition of the words but not less than one, in section 19, instead of the word store, that new word will be building, in section 20, instead of, uh, the acronym industrial, uh, it'll just be I district, section 21, uh, the addition of the words advertising, the sale, rental, or lease of the premises, section 22, or any amendment to this bylaw, section 23, the addition of the words no longer carried or sold at the premises or any, and then instead of in lieu of or sold, the word on is added, and then nothing for section 24, uh, section 25, instead of the word such, the word sound is replaced with, in its place, uh, section 26, the addition of the purposes of this article is, section 27, the addition of may be allowed by special permit, section 28, the addition of park in industrial garden park district, section 29, uh, the, the addition of the word regulations, and the addition of except as provided in section 450-5.5 of this bylaw, and then, uh, the, instead of taking out the word that and, and replacing it with except for, then the addition of the word of, and, uh, that is, that is it, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Torsha. So, um, I know that we are joined by the town clerk, Jeannie Quaglietti, councilors Page and Richards. I don't know if any of them wish to be heard on, on this matter even before I open it for a public hearing.
Well, I brought them all in anyway.
Okay. Well, we are joined by former planning board members and chairs, Mr. Page and Ms. Richards. Thank you for attending this evening in your role as town councilors. Do I turn it to Mr. Page?
You can.
Okay.
Thank you. So what we have here is a codification process that started three years ago. Um, what we're trying to do is recodify, um, all the general bylaws and all the zoning bylaws to make them easier, uh, easy accessibility. Um, we're doing this through a separate company, um, which will be putting all of these onto line so that they will be fully searchable documents. So what the hope is, is once everything's done, uh, the town will be able to go on to the main webpage, click on bylaws, type in a search, um, whether it be, let's say, dog, and anything related to that will come up, uh, whether it be a zoning bylaw or general bylaw. Um, in order to do that, we had to take the painstaking effort over the last three years of going through each separate department, um, re-categorizing, uh, relisting, re-looking at all the zoning bylaws, doing a legal analysis of all of our bylaws, um, going through this process, some of what we found was that language at some point in time had been adjusted, um, and I'm going to use the zoning bylaws as an example. Um, if you look back two zoning books ago, um, the format was completely different than the latest one, and our previous director had rewritten all of them by hand, and occasionally different lines were lost in, uh, the actual writing of it, and so the legal analysis caught a lot of this and said, wait a minute, there's language missing here, what is it? And so then it was our committee's job to go back and find what was missing, where it was missing, um, what was the correct language, if the language had been changed at a town meeting. Um, that's what we've compiled here. This is basically a list of, um, what E code considers changes. A lot of these are actually not changes, we're just correcting the situation, that, putting the language back to where it's good, but I am certain that someone has some questions, because that is one lengthy document, and if I can answer them, I would be happy to.
Questions for Mr. Page. Mr. Kingston?
Yeah, um, I, I, first of all, congratulate you on the effort and on picking up all of these little nits that we should have picked up on many years ago and trying to straighten them out. Um, and I agree with 99% of what you've done here. I've got a couple of minor nits I want to pick, but I have a major question. Um, we're being asked to amend, uh, chapter 450. Uh, does chapter 450 exist? Has the town council actually voted to incorporate the zoning bylaw into the general bylaws and created chapter 450, or should we be, we be, um, amending the existing bylaw and, um, in the same way, and then separately, uh, seeing a vote to incorporate that into the general bylaws? Can you explain?
So, chapter 450 is the zoning bylaws, um, and that's under the E code process, which the town council has voted to go ahead with the E codification. Um, but we can't proceed with a final vote on all the changes because state law requires our planning board to give a recommendation on the zoning bylaws, and if these changes in, um, formatting, if you're going to suggest, uh, that we do them or not. So it's sort of like a catch 22, George. Um, we can't go any further without getting approval from you, so it, it, it's basically up in the air like that, and that's, I mean, obviously, you realize, uh, all the zoning is done through the planning board, that chapter 48 requires it, and it requires a two-thirds vote, um, to recommend.
I, I recognize that, Ralph, and I recognize that this is the way some towns and cities do it, uh, that, uh, for instance, Chickopee does it this way, Ludlow, Abraham, and Long Meadow do not. Um, this is a choice on our part. Let me just get to the couple of nits. Um, special permit should be capitalized wherever it is because it refers to a specific item. Um, on, um, item 18, okay, you're talking about, um, something called Article 9 of the Eslang Meadow zoning bylaw. Under this, there's no longer an Article 9. Uh, we need to correct that to whatever it should be. Do you see that, Ralph?
I do, I'm looking at it and...
What section was that, George? I've got it in front of me and I just can't see.
Uh, that was, um...
18.
Item 18, which is section 450-5 dot 1A, refers to something called Article 9, and there is no Article 9 because we renamed things.
Okay.
Again, this is just a recommendation that we look at that and try to resolve what it should say.
Yeah, and, and, and I will just, just lay out that there were a couple of missing words. Um, you know, instead of this, this shall have the following meeting, it's, it reads, you know, it reads, this is the following reading, I mean, just a couple of little small grammatical things that might need to be looked at again, but nothing of any substance whatsoever. Before I open it to the public hearing, I want to acknowledge Mr. Punderson has joined the meeting. Um, are there, does Jeannie or Marilyn, do you want to add anything before I open it to the public meeting or public hearing?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Jean?
I think I just want to add that, um, I kind of oversaw the project, and we looked at each of the bylaw committee members for their specific expertise, and, and obviously, Ralph and Marilyn looked at the zoning bylaw. We've also, um, worked closely with, um, town council, town attorney, Jesse, and, um, he's, he's really given us some guidance on this, so we're making sure that everything is done legally in the, in the correct channels.
Great.
And, and Russ, we're going to look at those because even those little tiny things we looked at, and we thought we caught them all, so we'll look at those again, because shall, I can't find it in there, but I think we took out, we had, we had problems with shall and may and changed it to something else, so we'll just put everything on the record and we look at it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open, um, the public hearing, going to call the public hearing to be open, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this specific issue, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting? Again, I ask if there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter. Seeing none, uh, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, George.
But do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, so by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson? You're muted.
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. So I'll bring it back to the board. Um, do I have a, a motion on this?
I'll move to recommend this with the changes that we have highlighted specifically Russ's list of, uh, items, grammatical items, uh, my request that we have special permit, capitalized, and resolution of, um, the, reference to something called, um, Article 6, um, in an item 18, section 450-5.1. A, that that be resolved by the committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so that, that item passes. Uh, we are recommending those, uh, provisions to the town council, and I would like to add my congratulations to the three of you, especially Jean, or Jeannie, for all your hard work. It certainly was a, uh, I'm not going to say a labor of love, but it certainly was a labor, it certainly was a labor. Yeah, uh, so congratulations, and it's really a positive, uh, step forward for the town. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Torsha, next items.
All right, uh, continued public hearings, item number four, case SP 2021-10, 16 Meadowbrook Road, request for special permit for the installation of a wireless communications monopole and related equipment at 16 Meadowbrook Road, assessors parcel ID 78-1-0 on a 12 plus or minus acre site in the Residence A zoning district, applicant Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, 20 Alexander Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. This is continued from October the 19th, 2021, and November 16th, 2021.
Before I open it, open the public hearing up, I'd like to ask Bethany to step in and at least let us know the current status of, of this item.
Sure, so, um, they had their zoning board of appeals meeting, um, which was continued until January 10th, I believe. Um, they are just, um, they mentioned some information during the hearing but haven't submitted it yet for the record, so they are doing that, um, and keeping the public hearing open specifically so they can receive those additional, um, documents. Um, and other than that, I think it should probably wrap up, um, at their January meeting, but, um, the applicant has requested a continuance until the matter is resolved before the zoning board of appeals.
Questions for Bethany? So I'd like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who, uh, is in the audience and would like to be brought in to, um, to provide comments to the planning board, please raise your hand, be brought into the meeting. Again, asking if anyone is in the audience that would like to be brought in, not seeing anyone. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing until, would it be appropriate, the second meeting in January of the planning board?
Yes, and that will be, uh, January 18th.
January 18th. So do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to continue this public hearing, so by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Miss Saraswello?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next item, Mr. George. Oh, wait, before we go there, so we did receive, I found it a little troubling, we received an email from, uh, in a butter who was utilizing, um, Town of, Town of Eslang, or eslangmeadowma.gov, uh, email. Um, I found that to be troubling. Um, don't know if you wish to make the appropriate department head aware of the usage of that email, so. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, uh, item number five, case ZN 2021-03, ground mounted photovoltaic installations bylaw amendment, for the purpose of amending and clarifying the Town of Eslang Meadow zoning bylaws, section 7.5, ground mounted photovoltaic installations, and schedule of use, section 3.041, ground mounted photovoltaic arrays, by adding language permitting ground mounted photovoltaic installation in residence zoning districts. Petitioner, Eslang Meadow Planning Board, this has been continued from September the 21st, 2021, October the 5th, 2021, October 19th, 2021, November 16th, 2021, and December 7th, 2021.
So I'm going to ask our planning director again to step in. Um, so Bethany, before we get into the specifics, can you just remind everyone of all the research that you have done and all the various sources that you have included in the development of this final product that we hope to vote on this evening?
Sure, so this, um, largely draws upon the best practices guide, um, that was published by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission earlier this year. Um, they authored that or constructed it from, um, the guidance of many different, um, municipalities in Western Massachusetts, as well as, um, some graduate students, um, from UMass who specialize in solar, so they had a lot of really good input about what should go into this, this best practices guide, so it's heavily reliant on that guidance. Um, we know that we can't see into the future and see how solar will develop. Um, we can't guarantee that this will hold against an appeals court, um, but like our town attorney has told us, um, some regulation is better than none at all. So what this aims to do is to allow some ground mounted solar in residential zones without, um, allowing it to completely override that purpose, original purpose of the residential zones, um, in the hopes that this will satisfy the state's requirement. Um, and besides relying on that best practices guide, I looked to, um, our neighboring communities and spoke with them and looked at their, um, solar bylaws to try to get a feel for what they used, if it was working for them, if they could change it, what would they change, and those types of questions. Um, but because it's so new, a lot of people, um, are still learning about their solar bylaws, and if it does work for them, and, um, a few are, are about to open up the discussion of amending theirs again. So seems like everybody's trying to get a feel for what the needs of their community are and, um, being responsive to, um, the interest in solar as it moves along.
And we also sought input from the town building inspector. We sought input from, from the town's attorney, uh, as well. We have gotten input from each member of the planning board. I know Mr. Punderson has been extremely helpful with his experience with all of this as well. I know Mr. Punderson has been extremely helpful with his experience with all of this as well. So can you just as a, kind of give a flavor on what would be the major change from the one that is currently on the books and one that we will be hopefully acting on this evening?
Sure, there's a few big changes. Previously, ground-mounted solar arrays were only allowed in two zones, our industrial zones. In this amendment, they are allowed in almost every zone. We have different types of solar installations. We have small scale, which is occupies two thousand one hundred square feet or less of surface area of solar panels. Then we have medium scale, which is ground-mounted solar installations that occupy more than two thousand one hundred square feet, but less than thirty-two thousand square feet of surface area of solar panels. And then we have large-scale ground-mounted solar, and that is thirty-two thousand square feet or more. So this one, it's requiring a site plan review for medium and large scale. So a small scale would require a building permit only. I've kind of used a similar language from the original bylaw as far as setbacks for medium and large scale in other districts outside of residential districts, including the buffer if it is next to a residence or residential district. However, if there is a, any ground-mounted solar in a residential district, it must adhere to the accessory use, so there must be a primary dwelling on the property, and I'm hoping that will help prevent situations like we had on Rear Peace Road, where it's completely taken over by this new use. So that is the meat of it. There's a lot of big changes, though, just in what I've said there, so I welcome any feedback. This is your town and your bylaw, so I want to make sure it's a good fit.
So before we reopen the public hearing that has been continued, questions from the board?
So it's not under special permit, it's just under accessory use?
In a residential district.
Residential district, right. I'm asking Bethany.
Correct, so no special permit, medium and large scale, whether or not they are in residential would need a site plan review. So it's only small scale, so under twenty-one hundred feet, that would just need a building permit.
So are there any boundaries for, you know, shielding the neighbors, anything like that with the accessory use?
For the accessory use, let me see here.
If you want to pull it up, you can, do you have screen sharing capabilities?
Yeah, that might be easiest.
You should be all set, Bethany.
So this section here really goes over the small-scale ground-mounted, there's a note on the utility notification. So nothing specifically about creating a buffer for small scale. I imagine small scale would be mostly used in residential areas, and that's largely because our town attorney advised to try to steer away from a bylaw that prohibits solar installations based off of how they will look. He thought that wasn't as strong of a perspective to go into it with, and that we should really focus more on public safety, so whether or not it produces a glare or something like that, that could be an issue for drivers. But for the medium and large...
Yeah, that can require a site plan.
Yeah, that requires a site plan, so basically the same thing that we currently require, I kept all of that in there, and then if they are... Yeah, so here are their setbacks.
Yeah. It just concerns me to get a ten-panel system that follows the sun, this is a pretty big...
So again, under accessory use, it just has here that all grounded, ground-mounted solar systems in residential districts shall be installed either in the side yard or rear yard to the extent practical.
Well, I don't know what just happened, but I had stated that it just doesn't seem reasonable that maybe a ten-panel configuration that can follow the sun, which is pretty big, it's a twelve by thirty feet. I just wondering if maybe we should put something in there that says requires screening and have the courts tell us not to, rather than go into this completely unprotected.
Sure, do you want that for...
Just the small.
Okay.
Yeah. Can we do that reasonably, or am I being unreasonable?
I think you can do it, I don't know if it would be as far as enforcement.
We can put it in, and then the courts rule otherwise, then they rule otherwise.
I agree, I just think it's better than not protecting people or trying to from the start, so.
Right.
Do you have language, Pete?
No, I don't, but I'm sure if I sat down for a few minutes, I could think about it.
Yeah, if you want to email me or when you have some time to think about how you want that phrase, I'm happy to put it in there.
Yeah, you know, can be, well fences are different, but some sort of shrubbery that, you know, at least covers fifty percent of the structure's height at planting, which will grow larger later, I can just imagine your neighbor has one of these things, you got a half a million dollar house and it's sitting in their backyard and you're looking at it all the time when you're in your swimming pool or something, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yep. Other questions?
Bethany, I'll talk with you about it if you'd like to.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Kingston, do you have a question?
No, I actually like very much what we've got here. I would actually suggest that we move on it tonight if we could, and then amend it if necessary. I know that that's complicated because we have to re-advertise it, but that's my thought.
Okay.
I like it too, just with the exception of the small photovoltaic systems not having any sort of protection, or that people don't have any sort of protection, no buffer, that's all.
So I believe that, hold on, let me check. I believe Mr. Page and Ms. Richards, Mrs. Richards are still on the call, so I'm wondering if they would be open to a friendly amendment from you, Mr. Punderson, so that we could potentially vote on this this evening, and you and Bethany provide them with appropriate language before Bethany leaves, so they might incorporate that into their deliberations because as we know, they need to approve this bylaw as well. I'm just thinking of process.
Well, I would say that the border should be as long as the length of the installation and fifty percent of the height of it at planting.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think that's restrictive, it's just make it look better, that's all.
I agree, I agree. So I'm going to open this public hearing, and if anyone would like to address the board, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting?
Ralph should be here.
Okay. Can you, can you remove the...
Screen sharing.
Screen share, yeah. Mr. Page?
So Russ, yes, I was listening. If, if language is put together by Bethany and Pete, I would be more than happy to bring it forwards at the council.
Okay, yeah, I think there would be general agreement on that amendment from the board, but as you know, we are losing a planning director in a day and a half or two days, and there is some crunch, even though we've had this in front of us for four months, but we believe that we've done a, or specifically Bethany has done an outstanding job kind of pulling it all together, we've provided a lot of feedback from them as well. So are there other members from the public who wish to be heard on this matter, be brought into the meeting? Hearing none. I can finally ask, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So do we have a motion to approve, the bylaw is written, and I'm going to add this, with the understanding that Mr. Punderson and Bethany will develop language concerning buffering, a buffering strip associated with the ground-mounted units in residential districts and provide it to the town council? Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Like in a form of an amendment, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, kind of a friendly amendment from the planning board. Yeah, okay. So on the motion to approve, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I just want to say, Bethany, great job.
Thank you.
You know, this town, this town has suffered through this solar issue over the course of the last eighteen months. It certainly has not been to anyone's satisfaction other than an out-of-state petitioner who used the courts to override the will of the voters of the Town of Eslang Meadow. So I applaud the work that you did, Bethany, and all the, and all the work the members of the planning board did on this, so. All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
The last thing is the director's report.
Bethany?
Yeah, so my last day is Thursday, and it's a half day due to the holiday coming up. So I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting me in the director position. I know that I was new to the town and new to the position, and you guys were just such a huge source of support and taught me so much about Eslang Meadow and what's going on here. We're leaving Nina holding up the fort, unfortunately. Hopefully we'll have a new director in my place sooner than later. I have reached out to our HR director as well as the town manager, there's a lot of different things happening at town hall, so I've told Nina that if new applications come in in January, that the boards may want to consider using the full sixty-five day review period. If there is no director in place, that would mean just pushing it off for the public hearing date, which will help Nina out as far as the public hearing requirements on our end of things, sending out the better notifications and writing the decisions after the meetings. That is not an administrative role or duty, and I'd like to try to keep it that way to help Nina out during the transition.
And Nina, I'm sure that all the members of the board will be willing to help you in any way that we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Don't worry about calling us, I'll be happy to talk to you anytime.
I think George has had experience with this in between directors in the past, that's for sure.
Twice.
Yeah. This may not be your third time, so, but.
Bethany, absolutely.
I'm just going to say, you know, it has been a pleasure working with you. I think you have a number of feathers in your, in your cap, most notably getting the master plan done, certainly in a truncated period of time. You know, planning departments are not always an easy place to work. Some people, some people are more aggressive in some of the things that they wish to do, others like to follow the rules, others don't. We need to be as consistent with everyone, and you have done a wonderful job doing that. Your diplomacy skills have shown through, so I applaud you for that as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to add anything? Pete?
Bethany, you've actually taught me more in the past year here, however long you've been here, it hasn't been long enough, than I learned in all the other years being on the planning board as to how it really, what really goes on, how it really works. You did an amazing job with using your resources, and I appreciate it, did a great job.
Thank you.
And just before I close the meeting, I'd wish to thank each and everyone on this call. You know, we are volunteers, we all go into meetings really trying to do the very best we can on behalf of the residents of the town. I have not seen one meeting where I felt someone had some type of self-interest, and the only interest people have is for what's, what's the best for the Town of Eslang Meadow, and I think that is a really wonderful quality that each one of you bring. When I first joined the board, George and I did not always agree on everything, but after about six months, he said to me, you know, disagreement is good sometimes, it means that there are a variety of different opinions, and it's good when there are a variety of opinions and you come to a consensus, and I agree wholeheartedly with him. So keep up the good work, everybody, and have a great holiday, and let's hope that twenty twenty-two brings better things for the town and for the world. All right, everybody, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, by roll call, because we have to, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, and we'll see everybody tomorrow. And I'm an aye as well, and we'll see everybody tomorrow.
Good night.
Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy your holidays.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk. So when we get into this, so.
Yeah, just bear with me.
Let's have Bethany step in and give you some guidance on exactly what needs to be read into the record.
Yeah, so the Planning Board is only acting on the zoning bylaws, which is the bottom half of what you see here on the agenda. So John, if it's easier for you to read that document that I sent you that clarifies exactly what sections apply to the zoning bylaw, you can feel free to do that and just read the highlighted sections and then we'll go through with the actual changes.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Now, these are the, these are the bolded and black and bolded items along this larger document?
Yep.
Okay, so I will, I'll do that. I just wanted to make sure definitively.
Why don't we just, why don't we first just start off with, this is case, at least through the first.
First three lines here?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. So new public hearing, case ZN 2021-4, Schedule A, for the purpose of amending the Town of Eslang Meadow zoning bylaws, Schedule A, by adding clarifying language within, within, and then I can move on to the the other part here. Now, this is, instead of crossing out town meeting, adding town council in section two, in section three, instead of where from, there from, in section four, adding in the item for, or adding in the language for swimming pools and then period fences surrounding, and then adding C before subsection before, and then adding for additional criteria, and then for, again, another for. Section five, adding the word district, then adding the words in the, and then adding district again. Section six, adding the language are permitted. Section seven, instead of dimension, that word changes to setback, and then adding the words, the foregoing fencing for neighborhood swimming pools shall conform to. Section eight, in industrial garden, it'll be park district, the word park being added. And then in section nine, subsection four, five, four fifty, dash, four point six permitted uses. In section ten, the words, then the required setbacks. Section eleven, square feet. Section twelve, at the end, special permit application and subdivision review site plan. Section thirteen, in, instead of building zone map, zoning districts map identified in subsection four, fifty, dash, two point one. In, instead of the word following, uses permitted in table three, dash, one. Going on to section fourteen, instead of a use permitted by section five point four oh two. That'll read golf course uses. And then instead of a use permitted by section five point four oh two, golf course uses. Section fifteen, the add, the addition of the word antenna. No changes for section sixteen or seventeen. Section eighteen, the addition of the words but not less than one. In section nineteen, instead of the word store, that new word will be building. In section twenty, instead of the acronym industrial, it'll just be I district. Section twenty-one, the addition of the words advertising the sale, rental, or lease of the premises. Section twenty-two, or any amendment to this bylaw. Section twenty-three, the addition of the words no longer carried or sold at the premises or any. And then, instead of in lieu of or sold, the word on is added. And then, nothing for section twenty-four. Section twenty-five, instead of the word such, the word sound is replaced with, in its place. Section twenty-six, the addition of the purposes of this article is. Section twenty-seven, the addition of may be allowed by special permit. Section twenty-eight, the addition of park in industrial garden park district. Section twenty-nine, the, the addition of the word regulations, and the addition of except as provided in section four, fifty, dash, five point five of this bylaw. And then, the, instead of taking out the word that and, and replacing it with except for, then the addition of the word of. And that is, that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Torsia. So I know that we are joined by the town clerk, Jeanie Quagley Eddy, councilors Page and Richards. I don't know if any of them wish to be heard on this matter even before I open it for a public hearing.
Well, I brought them all in anyway.
Okay. Well, we are joined by former Planning Board members and chairs, Mr. Page and Ms. Richards. Thank you for attending this evening in your role as town councilors. Do I turn it to Mr. Page?
You can.
Okay.
So what we have here is a codification process that started three years ago. What we're trying to do is recodify all the general bylaws and all the zoning bylaws to make them easier, easy accessibility. We're doing this through a separate company, which will be putting all of these onto line so that they will be fully searchable documents. So what the hope is, is once everything's done, the town will be able to go on to the main webpage, click on bylaws, type in a search, whether it be, let's say, dog, and anything related to that will come up, whether it be a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw. In order to do that, we had to take the painstaking effort over the last three years of going through each separate department, re-categorizing, relisting, re-looking at all the zoning bylaws, doing a legal analysis of all of our bylaws. Going through this process, some of what we found was that language at some point in time had been adjusted, and I'm going to use the zoning bylaws as an example. If you look back two zoning books ago, the format was completely different than the latest one, and our previous director had rewritten all of them by hand. And occasionally, different lines were lost in the actual.
First three lines here.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. So new public hearing case Z N twenty twenty one dash four. Schedule A for the purpose of amending the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, schedule A. By adding clarifying language within, within, and then I can move on to the. The other part here now, this is instead of crossing out town meeting adding town council. In section two, in section three, instead of where from there from. In section four, adding in the item for or adding in the language for swimming pools and then period fences surrounding. And then adding C before subsection before and then adding for additional criteria and then for again another for. Section five, adding the word district, then adding the words in the and then adding district again. Section six, adding the language are permitted. Section seven, instead of dimension, that word changes to setback. And then adding the words the foregoing fencing for neighborhood swimming pools shall conform to. Section eight in industrial garden, it'll be park district, the word park being added. And then in section nine subsection four five zero four fifty dash four point six permitted uses. In section ten, the words then the required setbacks, section eleven square feet. Section twelve, at the end, special permit application and subdivision review site plan. Section thirteen, in instead of building zone map zoning districts map identified. And subsection four fifty dash two point one. In instead of the word following uses permitted in table three dash one. Going on to section fourteen, instead of a use permitted by section five point four oh two. That'll read golf course uses. And then instead of a use permitted by section five point four oh two golf course uses. Section fifteen, the add the addition of the word antenna. No changes for section sixteen or seventeen. Section eighteen, the addition of the words but not less than one. In section nineteen, instead of the word store, that new word will be building. In section twenty, instead of the acronym industrial, it'll just be I district. Section twenty one, the addition of the words advertising the sale rental or lease of the premises. Section twenty two or any amendment to this bylaw. Section twenty three, the addition of the words no longer carried or sold at the premises or any. And then instead of in lieu of or sold, the word on is added. And then nothing for section twenty four, section twenty five, instead of the word such. The word sound is replaced with in its place. Section twenty six, the addition of the purposes of this article is. Section twenty seven, the addition of maybe allowed by special permit. Section twenty eight, the addition of park in industrial garden park district. Section twenty nine, the the addition of the word regulations. And the addition of except as provided in section four fifty dash five point five of this bylaw. And then the instead of taking out the word that and and replacing it with except for. Then the addition of the word of. And that is, that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Torsia. So I know that we are joined by the town clerk, Jeannie Quagley Eddie. Counselors Page and Richards. I don't know if any of them wish to be heard on on this matter even before I open it for a public hearing.
Well, I brought them all in anyway.
Okay. Well, we are joined by former planning board members and chairs, Mr. Page and Ms. Richards. Thank you for attending this evening in your role as town counselors. Do I turn it to Mr. Page?
You can.
Okay. As far as yours.
So what we have here is a codification process that started three years ago. What we're trying to do is recodify all the general bylaws and all the zoning bylaws. To make them easier, easy accessibility. We're doing this through a separate company, which will be putting all of these onto line so that they will be fully searchable documents. So what the hope is, is once everything's done, the town will be able to go on to the main webpage, click on bylaws. Type in a search, whether it be, let's say, dog and anything related to that will come up, whether it be a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw. In order to do that, we had to take the painstaking effort over the last three years of going through each separate department. Recategorizing, relisting, relooking at all the zoning bylaws. Doing a legal analysis of all of our bylaws. Going through this process, some of what we found was that language at some point in time had been adjusted. And I'm going to use the zoning bylaws as an example. If you look back two zoning books ago, the format was completely different than the latest one. And our previous director had rewritten all of them by hand. And occasionally, different lines were lost in the actual writing of it. And so the legal analysis caught a lot of this and said, wait a minute, there's language missing here. What is it? And so then it was our committee's job to go back. And find what was missing, where it was missing, what was the correct language, if the language had been changed at a town meeting. That's what we've compiled here. This is basically a list of what E code considers changes. A lot of these are actually not changes, we're just correcting the situation. That putting the language back to where it's good. But I am certain that someone has some because that is one lengthy document. And if I can answer them, I would be happy to.
Questions for Mr. Page. Mr. Kingston?
Yeah, I I first of all congratulate you on the effort and on picking up all of these little nits that we should have picked up on many years ago. And trying to straighten them out. And I agree with ninety nine percent of what you've done here. I've got a couple of minor nits I want to pick. But I have a major question. We're being asked to amend chapter four fifty. Does chapter four fifty exist? Has the town council actually voted to incorporate the zoning bylaw into the general bylaws and created chapter four fifty? Or should we be, we be amending the existing bylaw and in the same way? And then separately, seeing a vote to incorporate that into the general bylaws. Can you explain?
So chapter four fifty is the zoning bylaws and that's under the E code process. Which the town council has voted to go ahead with the e codification. But we can't proceed with a final vote on all the changes. Because state law requires our planning board to give a recommendation on the zoning bylaws and if. These changes in formatting. If you're going to suggest that we do them or not. So it's sort of like a catch twenty two, George. We can't go any further without getting approval from you. So it it's basically up in the air like that. And that's, I mean, obviously you realize. All the zoning is done through the planning board that chapter forty A requires it and it requires a two thirds vote to recommend.
I recognize that, Ralph, and I recognize that this is the way some towns and cities do it. That, for instance, Chickapi does it this way, Ludlow, Overham and Long Meadow do not. This is a choice on our part. Let me just get to the couple of nits. Special permit should be capitalized wherever it is because refers to a specific item. On. Item eighteen, okay? You're talking about something called Article nine of the East Long Meadow zoning bylaw. Under this, there's no longer an Article nine. We need to correct that to whatever it should be. Do you see that, Ralph?
I do. I'm looking at it and.
What section was that, George? I've got it in front of me and I just can't.
That was.
Eighteen.
Item eighteen, which is section four fifty dash five dot one A. Refers to something called Article nine, and there is no Article nine because we renamed things.
Okay.
Again, this is recommendation that we look at that and try to resolve what it should say.
Yeah. And 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 I will just. Just lay out that there were a couple of missing words. You know, instead of this, this shall have the following meeting. It's it res, you know, it reads this is the following reading, I'm just a couple of little small. Grammatical things that might need to be looked at again, but nothing of any substance whatsoever. Before I open it to the public hearing, I want to acknowledge Mr. Punderson has joined the meeting. Are there, does Jeannie or Marilyn, do you want to add anything before I open it to the public meeting or public hearing?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Jean?
I think I just want to add that I kind of oversaw the project and we looked at each of the. Bylaw committee members for their specific expertise and and obviously Ralph and Marilyn looked at the zoning bylaw. We've also worked closely with town council, town attorney, Jesse. And. He's he's really given some guidance on this, so we're making sure that everything is done legally in the in the correct channels.
Great.
And and Russ, we're going to look at those because even those little tiny things we looked at and we thought we caught them all, so we'll look at those again because. I can't find it in there, but I think we took out, we had, we had problems with Shal and May and changed it to something else, so. We'll just put everything on the record and we look at it again.
Yeah. So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Going to call the public hearing to be open. And if there's anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this specific issue, would you please? Raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting. Again, I ask if there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter. Seeing none, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, George.
What? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. So by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Miss Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson? You're muted.
Hi.
And I'm a I as well. So I'll bring it back to the board. Do I have a a motion on this?
I'll move to recommend this with the changes that we have highlighted specifically Russ's list of. Items, grammatical items, my request that we have special permit capitalized. And resolution of the. Reference to something called. Article six in an item eighteen, section four fifty dash five point one point A, that that be resolved by the committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that. That item passes. We are recommending those divisions to the town council and I would like to add. My congratulations to the three of you, especially Jean or Jeannie for all your hard work. It certainly was a. I'm not going to say a labor of love, but it certainly was a labor. It certainly was a labor. Yeah, so congratulations and it's really a positive step forward for the town. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Torsia, next items.
All right, continued public hearings, item number four, case SP twenty twenty one dash ten sixteen Meadowbrook Road. Request for special permit for the installation of a wireless communications monopole and related equipment at sixteen Meadowbrook Road. Assessors parcel ID seventy eight dash one dash zero on a twelve plus or minus acre site in the residence A zoning district applicant. Selco partnership DBA Verizon Wireless twenty Alexander Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. This is continued from October the nineteenth, twenty twenty one and November sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
Before I open it, open the public hearing up, I'd like to ask Bethany to step in and at least let us know. The current status of of this item.
Sure, so they had their zoning board of appeals meeting, which was continued until January tenth, I believe. They are just, they mentioned some information during the hearing but haven't submitted it yet for the record, so they are doing that. And keeping the public hearing open specifically so they can receive those additional documents. And other than that, I think it should probably wrap up at their January meeting, but. The applicant has requested a continuance until the matter is resolved before the zoning board of appeals.
Questions for Bethany? So I'd like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who is in the audience and would like to be brought in to. To provide comments to the planning board, please raise your hand. Be brought into the meeting. Again, asking if anyone is in the audience that would like to be brought in, not seeing anyone. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing until, would it be appropriate, the second meeting in January of the planning board?
Yes, and that will be January eighteenth.
January eighteenth. So do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to continue this public hearing. So by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Next item, Mr. George. Oh, wait, before we go there, so we did receive, I found it a little troubling. We received an email from a in a butter who was utilizing. Town of, town of East Long or East Long Meadow MA dot gov email. I found that to be troubling. Don't know if you wish to make the appropriate department head aware of the usage of that email. So. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, item number five, case Z N twenty twenty one dash zero three. Ground mounted photovoltaic installations bylaw amendment. For the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, section seven point five. Ground mounted photovoltaic installations in schedule of use, sections three point zero four one. Grand mounted photovoltaic arrays by adding language permitting ground mounted. Photovoltaic installation in resident zoning districts. Petitioner East Long Meadow Planning Board, this has been continued from September the twenty first, twenty twenty one. October the fifth, twenty twenty one, October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, November sixteenth, twenty twenty one and December seventh, twenty twenty one.
So I'm going to ask our planning director again to step in. So Bethany, before we get into the specifics, can you just remind? Everyone of all the research that you have done and all the various sources. That you have included in the development of this final product that we hope to vote on this evening.
Sure, so this largely draws upon the best practices guide that was published by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission earlier this year. They authored that or constructed it from the guidance of many different municipalities in Western Massachusetts. As well as some some graduate students from UMass who specialize in solar, so they had a lot of really good input. About what should go into this this best practices guide, so it's heavily reliant on that guidance. We know that we can't see into the future and see how solar will develop. We can't guarantee that this will hold against an appeals court. But like our town attorney has told us, some regulation is better than none at all, so. What this aims to do is to allow some ground mounted solar in residential zones without allowing it to completely override that. Purpose, original purpose of the residential zones. In the hopes that this will satisfy the state's requirement. And besides relying on that best practices guide, I looked to. Our neighboring communities and spoke with them and looked at their solar bylaws to try to get feel for what they. Used, if it was working for them, if they could change it, what would they change in those types of questions? But because it's so new, a lot of people are still learning about their solar bylaws and if it does work for them and. A few are are about to open up the discussion of amending theirs again, so. Seems like everybody's trying to get a feel for what the needs of their community are and being responsive to. The interest in solar as it moves along.
And we also sought input from the town building inspector. We saw input from from the town's attorney as well. We have gotten input from each member of the planning board. I know Mr. Punderson has been extremely helpful with his experience with all of this as well. So can you just as a kind of give a flavor on what would be the major change from the. One that is currently on the books and one that we will be hopefully acting on this evening?
Sure, there's a, it's a few big changes. Previously, ground mounted solar arrays were only allowed in two zones or industrial zones. In this amendment, they are allowed in almost every zone. We have. Different types of solar installations. We have small scale, which is occupies two thousand one hundred square feet or less of surface area of solar panels. And we have medium scale, which is ground mounted solar installations that occupy more than two thousand one hundred square feet. But less than thirty two thousand square feet of surface area of solar panels. And then we have large scale ground mounted solar and that is thirty two thousand square feet or more. So this one, it's requiring a site plan review for medium and large scale. So a small scale would require a building permit only. I've kind of used the similar language from the original bylaw as far as. Setbacks for medium and large scale in other districts outside of residential districts. Including the buffer, if it is next to a residence or residential district, however, if there is a, any. Ground mounted solar in a residential district, it must adhere to the accessory use. So there must be a primary dwelling on the property and I'm hoping that will help prevent situations like we had on Rear Peace Road. Where it's completely taken over by this new use. So that is the meat of it. There's a lot of big changes though, just in what I've said there, so I'm. I welcome any feedback. This is your town and your bylaw, so I want to make sure it's a good fit.
So before we reopen the public hearing that has been continued, questions on the board?
So it's not under special permit, it's just under accessory use?
In a residential district.
The residential district, right. George? I'm asking Bethany.
Correct, so no special permit, medium and large scale. Whether or not they are in residential would need a site plan review. So it's only small scale, so under twenty one hundred feet. That would just need a building permit.
So are there any boundaries for, you know. Shielding the the neighbors, any anything like that with the accessory use?
For their accessory use, let me see here.
If you want to pull it up, you can, do you have screen sharing capabilities?
That might be easiest.
You should be all set, Bethany.
Okay. So this section here really goes over the small scale ground mounted. There's a note on the utility notification. So nothing specifically about. Creating a buffer for small scale. I imagine small scale would be mostly used in residential areas. And that's largely because our town attorney advised to try to steer away from. A bylaw that prohibits solar installations based off of how they will look. He thought that. Um, he thought that wasn't as strong as of a perspective to go into it. Um, with and that we should really focus more on public safety, so whether or not it produces a glare or um, something like that. That could be an issue for drivers. But um, for the medium and large um.
Yeah, that can require a site plan.
Yeah, that requires site plan, so basically the same thing that we currently require, I kept all of that in there and then if they are um. Yeah, so here are their setbacks.
Yeah.
Um.
It just concerns me to get a two panels, it just concerns me to get a ten panel system that follows the sun, this is a pretty big.
So uh, again, under accessory use, it just has here that all granted, ground mounted solar systems in residential districts. Um, shall be installed either in the side yard or rear yard to the extent practical.
Well, I don't know what just happened, but um, I I had stated that it just doesn't seem reasonable that. Maybe a a ten panel configuration that can follow the sun, which is pretty big, it's a twelve by thirty feet. Um, I just wondering if maybe we should put something in there that says requires screening and have the courts tell us not to. Rather to go into this completely unprotected.
Sure, do you want that for um?
Just just the just the small.
Okay.
And can we do that reasonably or am I being unreasonable?
I think you can do it, I don't know if it would be as far as enforcement, um.
We can put it in and then the courts rule otherwise, then they rule otherwise.
Yeah.
I agree, I just think it's better than not protecting people or trying to from the start, so.
Right.
It's my only.
Do you have language, Pete?
Uh. No, I don't, but um, I'm sure if I sat down for a few minutes, I could think about it.
Yeah, if you want to um, email me or um. Or when you have some time to think about how you want that phrase, I'm happy to put it in there.
Yeah, you know, it can be, well fences are different, but some sort of shrubbery that, you know, at least covers fifty percent of the structure's height. At planting, which will grow larger later, I could just imagine your neighbor has one of these things. You got a half a million dollar house and it's sitting in their backyard and you're looking at it all the time when you're in your swimming pool or something, that's that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Other questions?
Bethany, I'll talk with you about it if you'd like to.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Kingston, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I I actually like very much what we've got here. Um, I would actually suggest that we move on it tonight if we could. And then amend it if necessary. Um, I know that that's complicated because we have to readvertise it.
Yeah.
But um, that's my thought.
Okay.
I I like it too, all, just with the exception of the of the small photovoltaic systems, not having any sort of protection or the people don't have any sort of protection. No buffer, that's all.
So I I believe that um, hold on, let me check. I believe Mr. or Mr. Page and Miss Richards, Mrs. Richards are still. Uh, on the call, so I I I'm wondering if they would be open to a friendly amendment from you, Mr. Punderson. So that we could potentially vote on this this evening and you and Bethany provide them with. Um, appropriate language before Bethany leaves, so they might incorporate that into. Their deliberations because as we know, they need to approve this by law as well. I'm just thinking of process.
Well, I I would say that the the uh, the border should be as long as the length of the installation and fifty percent of the height of it at planting.
Okay.
I don't think that's too restrictive, it's just make it look better, that's all.
I agree, I agree, so I'm going to open this uh, public hearing. And if anyone would like to address the board, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting?
Ralph should be here.
Okay, can you, can you remove the um?
Screen sharing.
Screen sharing.
Screen share, yeah. Mr. Page.
So Russ, yes, I was listening, if um, if language uh, is put together by Bethany and Pete. I would be more than happy to bring it forwards at the council.
Okay, yeah, I I think there would be general agreement um, on that amendment from the board, but um. As you know, we are losing a planning director in a day and a half or two days and. There is some crunch, even though we've had this in front of us for four months, but we. Believe that we've done a, or specifically Bethany has done an outstanding job kind of pulling it all together, we've provided a lot of feedback from them as well. So are there other members from the public who wish to be heard on this matter, be brought into the meeting? Hearing none, I can finally ask, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Miss Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well, so um, do we have a motion to approve? The by law is written, and I'm going to add this, with the um. Understanding that Mr. Punderson and Bethany will develop language concerning. Buffering, a buffering strip associated with the ground mounted. Uh, units in residential districts and provide it to the town council. Everyone agree with that?
Yes. Be like in a form of a of an amendment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, kind of a friendly amendment from the planning board. Yeah, okay, so on the motion to approve, do I, do I have a a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Miss Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, I just want to say, Bethany, great job. Um.
Thank you.
This town, this, this town has suffered. Through this solar issue over the course of the last eighteen months. It certainly has not been to anyone's satisfaction other than an out of state petitioner who. Who used the courts to override the will of the voters of the town of East Long Meadow. So uh, I applaud the work that you did, Bethany, and and all the and all the work the members of the planning board did on this, so. All right, next item, Mr. Clark.
The last thing is uh, the director's report.
Bethany.
Yeah, so uh, my last day is Thursday, it's a half day due to the holiday coming up. Um, so I just wanted to thank everybody for um, supporting me for in the director position, I know that I was. New to the town and new to the position and you guys were just such a huge source of support. Um, and taught me so much about um, East Long Meadow and what's going on here. Uh, we're leaving Nina holding up the fort, unfortunately, uh, hopefully we'll have a new director in my place sooner than later. Um, I have reached out to our HR director as well as the town manager, um, there's a lot of different things happening at town hall, so. Um, I've told Nina that if new applications come in in January, that um. The boards may want to consider uh, using the full sixty five day review period. Um, if there is no director in place, that would mean just pushing it off for the public hearing date, which will um. Help Nina out um, as far as the public hearing requirements on our end of things, sending out the better notifications. And writing the decisions after the meetings, um, that is not an administrative role or duty. And I'd like to try to keep it that way to um, help Nina out during the transition.
And and Nina, I'm sure that all the members of the board will be willing to help you in any way that we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, don't, don't worry about calling us, um, I'll be happy to talk to you anytime.
I think George has had experience uh, with this in between directors uh, in the past, that's for sure.
Twice.
Yeah. This may not be your third time, so, but. I I I'm just going to say, you know, it has been a a pleasure working with you, um. I think you have a number of feathers in your in your cap, uh, most notably getting the master plan done. Um, certainly in a truncated uh, period of time. Um. You know, planning departments are not always an easy place to work, um, some people. Some people um, are more aggressive in some of the things that they wish to do, others uh, like to follow the rules, uh, others don't. Um, we need to be as consistent with everyone and you have done a wonderful job doing that. Uh, your diplomacy skills have shown through, uh, so I applaud you for that as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to add anything, Pete?
Bethany, you've actually taught me more in the past year here, however long you've been here, hasn't been long enough. Than I learned in all the other years uh, being on the planning board as to how it really go, what really goes on, how it really works. You did an amazing job with using your resources and I I appreciate it, did a great job.
Thank you.
And just before I close the meeting, I wish to thank uh, each and everyone on this call. Um, you know, we are volunteers, we all go into uh, meetings. Uh, really trying to do the very best we can on behalf of the residents of the town. I have not seen one meeting where I felt someone had some type of self-interest. And the only interest people have is for what's what's the best for the town of East Long Meadow. And I think that is a really wonderful quality that each one of you bring. Um, when I first joined the board, uh, George and I did not always agree on everything. But after about six months, he said to me, you know, uh, disagreement is good sometimes, it means that there are a variety of different opinions. And it's good when there are a variety of opinions and you come to a consensus and I agree wholeheartedly with them. So um, keep up the good work, everybody and uh, have a great holiday and they, let's hope that. Twenty twenty two brings better things for the town and for the world, so. All right, everybody, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Okay, uh, by roll call, because we have to, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Miss Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, and we'll see everybody tomorrow.